Looks like we have everybody that is going to be here. So I will go ahead and call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. I would like to start off by making a comment that it is with great sadness that I announced the passing of our former mayor Joe DiMigno. Joe was a terrible servant to the city of Alvin, and the work he accomplished in his years here at City Hall will be his lasting legacy to our community. Our prayers are extended to our city clerk and his wife Jill, and the rest of our family, and our flag is at half-mast in his honor. A proper proclamation and an honorable gesture of appreciation to signify his years of service will be discussed amongst council. At this time, I would like to observe a moment of silence for Joe DiMigno. You can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Act like the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a letter for everybody that you got their cell phones with you. Can you turn the camera up or put them on silent? If we could have a little call for you, camera. Three, here. Jackson, here. Lower. Lenu, here. Williamson, here. Smear, here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So. Do we have any additions, deletions? Williamson, yes. Smear, yes. Lenu, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. So we will start this evening with a proclamation recognizing the 90th birthday of Geneva Spicer Coney. Whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community, which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences this individual brings to all. And whereas the city of Alvin recognizes with respect and admiration the elders of our community and the many contributions they have made. Whereas Mrs. Geneva Spicer Coney is among those we would like to honor. Mrs. Coney came to Alvin in 1953 from Vicksburg, Mississippi. Her father, Sam Spicer Sr., was a sharecropper and a single parent after the death of his loving wife, Perely Ripken Spicer, and raised her and her eight sisters and one brother successfully, with none ever having entered the criminal judicial system. She married the late Joe Coney in 1957 and raised her four children. And whereas she was a highly regarded longtime member of Bethel Baptist Church and was a church kitchen supervisor. Mrs. Coney and her two elderly sisters and the hustle and bustle of child rearing never ended, and that's exactly the way the Spicer sisters lived. In 2005, Geneva Coney, Florence Wallace, and Julia Patterson, all in their late 70s, had been foster mothers to dozens of children over the past 18 years in the city of Alvin. They opened their homes and hearts and were labeled the original foster care workers or Star Carnival. Over the years, Mrs. Coney provided foster care in her home to over 100 children, who she still, to many of them, has a personal relationship to this day. And whereas Mrs. Coney was a licensed cosmetologist, factory worker, and an avid gardener, and loved beautification as well as her love of sporting events. And when she and her sisters Lula Harris still watch all professional sporting events on television, calling each other to remind of the time and chance. At the age of 90 years, she still has an eye of a perfectionist. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Victoria Snyder, mayor of Alvin, and on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Alvin, honor Geneva Spicer Coney for her long life and prosperity and wish her many more. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be effects the official seal of Alvin, Michigan on this 30th day of July in the year of 2024. That feels quite important. Yes. Nice. All right, so public hearing portion. Do we have anyone in our mix that would like to stand up and make a comment pertaining to an agenda right now?
I guess that would be you.
Please just say your name, Lyanna.
My name is Terrya, owner of Buenos, 1090 Michigan Ave. And I'm here lobbying again for the parking on Michigan Ave again. I spoke with some of you throughout this whole process. It's been brought to my attention that there is a possibility of only parking on one side of the street. I'm here lobbying against that again, parking on both sides of the street. Makes all sense in the world to everybody down through there. And I spoke with some of you and explained that the width of the road allows for that to happen. It's approximately 51 to 52 feet across that road, which means 25 to 26 feet on each side. A typical driving lane is 10 foot wide, typical parking lane is seven foot. That gives you 17 feet, it gives you eight feet left over. You can do whatever you want to do with it. Use it as a buffer lane or whatever, so that people are not opening the car doors into incoming traffic. There's plenty of room for that. Senator Bison's office, Hosma's office, Jim Whitehouse have also spoke and had emails supporting this. And recently at the town hall meeting, I just speak with Chief Kip and President Johnson in the hallway, as Linda took notes on that, and they were supportive of this as of that point. So with all those people supporting it, plus all the people I have and the signatures, it seems like that is a typical way to go. So that's pretty much all I have to say about it, but we'd like to see that take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to stand? Do we have anybody for? Nobody stands, okay. Do I have a motion to approve of the consent items that are listed? I'm sorry. Any questions, comments, corrections? I'm looking at the power of this three. Jackson, yes. Lenu, yes. Williamson, yes. Smear, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the resignation or the designation of Patrick Miller as street administrator?
So.
Support. I don't like voices yet, guys. And city manager? I can give a brief overview. So we're required to have a designated street administrator over our streets. Last, we had, I believe it was acting Director Kent Phillips, and we're just with permanent Director Miller, we're just updating our records to designate him as our street administrator. Any questions? Or is this for all streets, or just major streets? Or? This is for all streets. Any other questions? Lenu, yes. Williamson, yes. Reed, yes. Smear, yes. Jackson, yes. Next is our discussion on council members and tenants at the 2021 Michigan Police Convention. So Linda, talk on this. Could I help you with it? I don't want to discuss it, I just wanted to sign off. Okay, but I think it's on because of the price tag that's associated with that.
How many?
Yes.
Did we put in the budget this year for council members to attend these trainings?
No, I don't know if this is a separate. I believe there's a thousand dollars in that for trainings and.
For a council member or just?
For total for the year. And just to give an overview, when council member read to share interest to attend this conference and when the announcement, you're able to register, I just read, was speaking with Jill, the last time this brought up, they thought it were council to take action on it. A council member did want to attend. For early registration, I believe it's $4.99. After the early birth special, it's $5.99 per attendee. That does kind of include probably hotel for overnight stay and his injury and graphics. We just wanted to bring this to council's attention. Seek approval, and we'll be happy to start. Any member of council wishes to go with that, it's what council would like to do. Was it, yes.
I actually have interest in knowing if we can, but I think I just feel like that in some probably have to do a budget amendment sometime, because if two or three of us want to go, it's going to require more than that. So I just want to make sure that when we do it, then make sure we pass the budget change as well after we do it.
Was there any other interest? Going?
I have interest.
We got the interest as well. So we have three of us. Do we have any idea how much room and horse for approval? Room and meals? I'm not sure, I can look into that. They usually have a designated hotel where conference attendees will be staying. They only listed the early birth special right now for the counter registration, but we haven't looked into that. When it is going to be? Yeah, just this month.
As I said, we have another meeting before the early birth rate is over, so we could probably get all the details around council and reservations and have that ready for the next meeting. That way when we do it, it can actually be an action item.
So we can check out the agenda for next council meeting for approval. Okay? No, we got to put it on the next council, yeah. Is that this one, the price goes up? Yes. All right, discussion on our peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchant licenses. So council requires one of this on the agenda. Of course, we need to know whether this can go. But, yes.
So I'm trying to think about this thing, but I remember the council on the part put it on the agenda. Actually, for the last couple of weeks, I've just, when I've been out about kind of tracking some of the, like what I see that are out around the street side and things like that, I'm just wondering if there's a way to get a clear picture about how many licenses people are taking to do to peddlers. I wonder if there's a way we could maybe just get understanding how often that license is used and how it's enforced. I don't know that people are not following the rules, but I don't know that folks are following the rules. And so I think I would want to know. Because I've seen some that I think, I don't know if that was. If it's following the rules, it's sort of be interesting to see what permits are being pulled and then how the enforcement is going.
Mr. Mayor, from Ken Jackson.
Yes, I do believe this is what we've been talking about for the last few weeks of what we've been seeing. And I just believe there is some kind of way to know if someone comes down here and get that information from. And then also we would love to have the, we would say about the food, the license, let us know also if they give someone license to be able to sell food or you can cook food inside the street. It's like a 30-day license, which is what they get. But they can do it for their kids.
And also, with license, it's starting to mean that this contract should become a health program. They're going to achieve those licenses.
I'm saying what they should do is to tell us if we have someone here that's able to do a permit, and that permit will go with them wherever they go. So we wouldn't know nothing unless they have that permit as it's supposed to. So if you go to one of those areas and they don't have a permit up there, that's a rip that goes now. Because most people don't have.
So when speaking with Councilman Clark, I think what she had expressed to me was there's a provision in the current ordinance regarding investigation issuance for these licenses that are issued to peddlers, sponsors, and transient merchants. It's my understanding, and she can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but she's here now, but she had an issue with the provision that reads that there's a provision that says the chief of public safety does an investigation into the moral character and business reputation of the applicant. If they're found to be unsatisfactory, public safety chief shall basically disapprove the application. And then they deny the application. There is an appeal procedure, but it's my understanding it was somebody that had applied and was denied under this provision because there was some, there was something in the background that the chief had kind of red flagged. He had spoken with my office and spoken with the court. So I think what Councilman Clark was looking for was possibly a modification of the provision so that it may be a little bit more objective, whether we specified what specific offenses would be disqualified rather than where it just says moral character and business reputation. So, you know, say, nobody convicted of violent felony or felony involving factor dishonesty or something like that, that would probably be a little bit more objective. I mean, and again, I'm just, based on my limited conversation with Councilman Clark, that was my understanding, but just so the rest of the council has some background on that. If the council so chooses, I mean, we can certainly amend that provision fairly easily, but I guess I'd be looking for some feedback from Councilman Clark and the rest of the council as to what they would want to modify to. Like certainly offer suggestions, but this was kind of her thing.
Yeah. Yes, I just want to make a motion. I wanted to make a motion just to move this up to the next meeting so she hears something like that a little bit after the conference board. She's returned to.
It's just not for discussion, too. You're.
We can just put it on to the other. Yeah. So we can hear what she's saying.
Yes, yeah, also along with that, I'm just wondering, when we're talking about licenses. I'm just wondering, how many people do you have at an affair before you need a license? Because they've been out prior to the building, and they've also wrote all up and downs on the legs of the building with black marker and everything. And I'm just wondering, who makes arrangements for the, I know who makes arrangements for the rental, but has that been being rented out for major forbid affairs? Or how many people do you say make a bid affair? Something I understand if you have a family picnic, but that's, you know, that's not what you get a permit for. But if you're going to have 20, 30, 40 people, do you need a permit or how does that go?
You don't, not for that many. I don't know, we just passed a permit for the big read, and I believe if it's an event larger than 100 people, that requires a permit to be approved by council. But anyone can fill out the park reservation form to reserve any of our civilians within our park spaces. But for a larger event, I believe if it's more than 100 people, then it would require a permit to open where council will. I think the trouble that we're running into is we're following that process and they are holding their bids, and we don't know about that. So and we're finding out after the fact who will make the complaints. I did send out them out to our public services department, who do they handle the park reservations, just to be mindful and inform residents coming in on the sound application ordinance, which requires council approval prior to an event being held within one of our park spaces, as well as the, after it's slipping my mind, it's just a permit we just approved for the big read, which is if it's more than 100 people, then it has to come before council. So if you're aware of anyone having any of these events in our community, please remind them to fold the proper applications and permits, and because of the need to build, council needs to do that prior to the event taking place.
Yes, continue.
Thank you. I also received requests for information about our fee schedule for peddlers. Councilmember Jackson mentioned the length of a permit, et cetera. Is that something that we can include in this discussion next time? Like what the 30, 90, or 100 speeds are?
Be scheduled?
Yes.
Yes, and it's broken out the different price for the different lengths for the licenses. Our fee schedule is available on our city website. You can stop down and finance department will be able to provide you with a hard copy, as well as pretty much any department here at City Hall can provide that to you if you are unaware or do not have that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this topic? Okay. Next is our discussion on the M99 meeting. I know council and law have a lot of this on the agenda. We want to just handle this discussion first. The next meeting as well.
I just have a question about, I mean, what is the, like, when is the finishing point of this? Because I remember when it all kind of got dusted up over the last year. So what has to happen for us to say, be like such and such configuration? Who gets to make that decision and send that recommendation? And that is some of that conflict to get. Is that something, instead of a, like a discussion, it could potentially be an action item, some action, take action on it and be done with it? Is anyone, does anyone have any sort of hard feeling either way? I would say first have like another discussion and then not doing anything and then have to like put it off when clearly we're hearing from decisions that they'd like this to get buttoned up in short order, that way I don't know what the city would like. I'm just making a suggestion that if we're going to put it on the next agenda, that we make it an action item.
Well, I was just, go ahead.
I, so I know council member law, Laura, and I go before other we assumption at our town hall meeting that there needed discussion specifically about this. I agree that it has been, yeah, drug out over a long course of time. I think the issue is that on either side of the street, there are different needs and circumstances. And then one of the primary influences on this decision is also campus, so that college campus doesn't want any parking. And inherently, there's a debate happening related to that. And I think Chief Kip has some insight, as well as other city staff, who, or city managers, maybe you have any updates with regard to a timeline for this?
Yeah, so I spoke with Brandon Marer with MDA just asking, just to clarify, will they be releasing another public comment period? And he indicated no, they will not. They came for council, per council's request on June 21st. After releasing the original proposal, they took all of the comments that were received or provided by the residents within our community, and they developed four new options that based off of the feedback that they received. They came and presented those before council at the June 21st meeting. He indicated that they, MDA is now hoping that the city council would do all of the community engagement with the constituents to see, okay, these are the four options, which, what works for us, what doesn't. And then come back as council as a whole and make a decision on which option works best for our community. So right now, they're waiting on the city or city council to decide on which option works best for our community. He did indicate, unfortunately, do, he did, he said he didn't want to put a deadline, but we're so far into the summer months that unfortunately this mine reconfiguration will more than likely not take place until spring of 2022. We've just, their crews are booked with other projects. But we do need to make a decision whether a council wishes to, I guess, hold another meeting to discuss. But all of the options, I can resend them to everyone. They are available. The video from the June 21st is available on our website for people to go back and to review them. But speaking internally, city administration finds that the after-post option that allows for parking on the south side of Michigan Avenue with the buffers on the north side, just based on the fact that the residents who live along the south side, they do not have driveways. So that this would provide them with an option to have parking outside of their residence. The parking process would still provide parking for the business of along that district. And no answer unfortunately is going to please everyone. But right now, we need to remind ourselves of why we're looking into this in the first place, to alleviate some of the safety hazards along that roadway. And they really stress this is not a reconstruction yet. This is just a line reconfiguration. They still would like to fully reconstruct and change the layout of that roadway. But right now, this is what they can offer us at this time to, like I said, alleviate some of the safety hazard. So that would include the new line markings and then more signs, speed signs and whatnot along that roadway. So we just need to make a choice. I'm happy to again send out all those options to everyone, send the safety analysis that they created based off of those options. I believe they did include the parking on both sides so that we can review their data and come to a decision for them. Yes, Mayor Ken Jackson.
In that information, did they also consider and talk about any UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, and buses? Because I know they have a standard where they can, they can't go over certain lines. Am I correct or not?
Or you might go over.
Like say, if there's only two, if there's only a, if there's no parking, they can not go over. They can't go to the, of one of the lines. Say, if there is not any parking, like they cannot go over certain lines that have been drawn.
I don't know what that is, that's news to me, so.
The white lanes?
Yes. White lanes.
I don't think they can block those lanes, sorry.
But that's one. I just want to make sure that all that is in there too. So everything is in there, so that is shown. Everything is there, and we can make a decision. They continue to go forward. Was they able to add also the other, the other, I mean, the other draw?
Yep, and that was sent out to council, I believe, that next day after.
To all of the morning?
Council motion.
I was actually going to suggest, if you'd like to, I'll make this suggestion. Maybe we have a study session at 6 o'clock at the next council meeting. Allow the public and interested parties to come have their voice heard and share their thoughts and have us have a discussion about where we think this is going to go and then have it as an action item on the next agenda so that we can move this off the agenda. It seems that we've drugged our feet, we've lost our opportunity to get the lines repeated this year. I think we just have to make a decision. And so I would agree with council member Lenu that I think like that's a more discussion with the public, that we maybe open it up to a study session before the next council meeting and then have it as an action item. That way we can be done with this topic and move forward.
I guess we'll pick an hour, it's going to be enough time.
Serving with the last schedule.
That's just my, my. I think there's certainly have been a lot invested in this topic. My only concern with that is wait, we need a resolution on the agenda. So that would already have to be prepared before the meeting.
We could sub any action into that. I'm sorry. We could sub any action, we could leave it open for an action item. And then whichever action kind of comes to the top, we can put in there as the, as one we choose.
So I am, I'm able to let the majority would like to see happen. Yes.
I would say a council, a study session is necessary considering if there seems to be a lot of unresolved components of this that haven't had like that intentional face-to-face opportunity. It kind of came out in the town hall, but not sufficiently. So I think that that's necessary. Personally, I don't, I understand the need to end this and have clarity, but I also don't really know what if happening in the springtime that we would have to have it on the same day. That's just my thought. I do understand the need to bring it to a end though. So I mean, like for me, I would like to think about what was discussed at the council session and then ask some time to process, since it won't be happening for months anyway.
Correct. So kind of gone with that. Like I agree that that would give us more time to discuss at a study session instead of having it right before a council meeting. So if we wanted to have like a study session maybe a few days before that next council, that might be a good route to go. But at least that way we kind of leave it open. It's not going to be limited to one hour. And we will have time.
And we will have time to discuss, debate and hear from our constituents. That sound good? Okay. So maybe we can have somebody send out a, um, a polling Google to see what we might have available coming up. Sound good, everyone? Okay. All right, where are we at? Um, discussion on adult use marijuana, city attorney harvest.
So, uh, as the council is aware, we had a post-session discussion, uh, special meeting last week. Um, our office is going to be working with the director, planning to come back to council with, um, a draft that required the, of the discussions that we had in that post-session. I anticipate having a draft that will modify several provisions of the existing ordinance. Uh, probably the first meeting in September. We should be up for discussion slash first reading in September. Um, so that's where we're at.
Questions are terminated for call? Okay. All right, you check agenda items. Councilor.
Um, there's, uh, recently, like I mentioned, there have been several, or at least a few, um, parking lots that have been closed on the college campus or that are being returned to green space, which, um, is probably going to be beautiful. Um, but presents a problem especially in precinct six, um, and leading over precinct five on park and parking. Um, every fall, I mean, every academic year presents its own, um, challenges when it comes to student parking along residential streets overnight. Um, also creating safety hazards at intersections on Burns, Porter, Jackson. Um, and some of the intersections of Michigan Avenue, uh, with some, with some of those streets we go as well. Um, I would like to at least have some sort of conversation around parking enforcement. Um, I like to have time to ask the chief about some actions related to how we can, um, be prepared to handle what I think will be, and what many, many residents are concerned will be a problem in residential streets around the college with, with them losing a lot of parking spaces. Um, so I'd like to have that on the agenda. Um, and maybe there, uh, you know, I looked into other cities who have different parking systems. Um, maybe there might be some way for us to improve how we do, um, street curtside parking. So again, I don't want to eliminate it at all, um, but we, but there is going to be a, an issue with that this fall.
Any other agenda items? Helen?
Uh, not necessarily for the next meeting, uh, which is a primary council where our office is due for its annual review. Um, I know we've already been discussing the city manager review, so certainly we'll take a backseat, wait until the council completes that review. But, um, so, uh, this council here, we're, uh, we're, we're due for our annual review as well, so.
And if I can just to go off of that, I will be completing my own personal review, which I'm required to by state self-performant that you all will be beyond. And then I will be presenting that to you, um, within the next week or so, um, with my admissions that take place in September.
Any other agenda items? All right, um. Help from it. Anybody in the audience that would like to indicate that? Yep.
Do you want to go through the whole thing again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cherry out, old rainbows, one thousand ninety's Michigan Ave. Um, I understand that everybody wants to get this over with. I do too. Um, this is about the, also about, uh, driving on the bike lane. It's against the law. This is from M dot, in case anybody wants to know that. I can bring that along. Uh, also, uh, parking that you were addressing only on the south side to keep it safe for everybody. I understand that there's one person, one entity that wants no parking along that side, which is your boss and whoever, whatever. Anyway, uh, as I've discussed with a few people here, uh, we can put parking on both sides of that street. If he doesn't want parking down there in front of his hall, fine, exit out. That makes everybody happy. He was also in agreement to that. You took notice of that too. Uh, so that makes everybody happy with that. If you want to keep people safe and you're talking about keeping people safe, uh, down there where there's a traffic light for eighteen to twenty-two-year-old adults crossing the street. If you put only parking on the south side of the street, you're going to put my elderly and handicap having to walk in the winter time. But there are walkers and there are canes across that street. Now, you're worried about eighteen, twenty-year-old adults who have the ability to move and walk freely, which are going to put my elderly and my handicap people in jeopardy by not allowing them to park on the north side of the street also. To me, that doesn't seem like it makes any sense at all. So if you want to park in the only own south side, the first little lady that gets hit, who are we going to blame that? So I think there should be parking on both sides and with everybody that's in agreement with that and the college president was in agreement to it also. I don't see what the heck the whole of this. I mean, you already know that, um, we've got plenty of people, plenty of signatures that have supported this. You got your college president's support of it. Everybody's in support of it. There's no reason to even be holding it up any longer. I don't feel, the last time I talked to most of the council members, they were in agreement to it too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street. Um, just a, a comment and then a question. So one, I'm sure it's already, I missed the beginning of the meeting, but, um, I'm sure it's already been acknowledged, the, the passing of, uh, former mayor Domingo. And I just wanted to, um, say that, uh, that's a, it's a major loss for the community, um, and the work that he did. And wanted to just offer condolences to our city clerk as well. So I just, uh, couldn't, uh, not listen and remark on that. So, um, I also wanted to, I guess, inquire about, uh, I know the process when it came to recreation marijuana. There was, uh, there was, uh, I guess, something on the books and that was, you know, then the city decided not to offer licenses. And then the off, there were licenses offered to, uh, someone, I want to, I want to say one of the last few meetings. Um, but the question I had, and I don't know if I've heard clarification of this, but can, if the city puts out that we're going to offer twenty licenses and then draws it back down, does that put the city, city in any liability if someone goes to apply for those, those other licenses? Because we started off at a higher number. So, um, I'll be reaching out to my council member, the manager, and just trying to see what, um, the implications of that are. Uh, because it, because it was, it seems to me it was offered, removed and then offered again, but at a lower number. So I'm wondering, like I said, does that put the city in any kind of, um, liability if any other, uh, company or investor wanted to, make that investment in our community? Thank you.
Any else in the audience want to stand in the comment? We have anybody else come in? No, so, all right. Yes.
Every showers, you know, five to have a drive. So one of the meetings I heard that it was twenty, but they could reduce it down. So now you're saying that the council can't reduce it down? Maybe you can't answer me yet, but I, I, yeah, I took a vote five. Just because some people who didn't want it, they wanted more. I want to ask, do they live in this town? Do these people who are growing this stuff, do they live here? Or they live away from here and just want to mess up our town? Just saying, you know, this year, um, stuff that you're doing, I don't approve of it. I had a youth gathering at my house Saturday and I looked at all those young people who will be subject to this marijuana. And I know you can buy it anywhere else, but why our town? Why would we subject this to our children, to our community, to our way of life? I don't see it. I don't see it. And I see that a lot of people will be affected. Whatever you choose on this board will be affected by this town, by this town, by our community, our children, our people. And I just don't see it. So I'm asking you how to make the right choices and the right decisions. And think about your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, your nieces, your nephew, anybody that come in this community. Think about it. What we will offer them and this is how it could all be.
I'm not sure if your guys is being like, but.
What does it say?
Anybody else in the audience have a? Yeah. All right, so we're going to, um, our city manager.
Yes, thank you. The copy of my report was included in the meeting packet. So just what the fourth progress meeting for the first, second, third wild and harmful streets project, um, continues to move forward. It was held on Wednesday, July come first and attached the minutes, um, for your reference. Um, the Dream Build Rise Pitch Event, I have the flag to attend that, the final pitch event, um, last Monday. Um, for the first cohort of the Dream Build Rise program. I just want to say congratulations to all the participants and the winners. Um, first place to Inside Out Automotive. Um, I believe Miss Brenda Pooleberg was second place and then the Yellow Bird Chocolate Shop, um, was third place. So again, just congratulations to everyone who participated in that event. Um, citizens to beautify Alvin and met with that group, um, last Tuesday, July twenty seventh. Um, during this meeting, they provided me with an update on the ongoing Chelsea Austin app corner verification project um, to honor the late Miss Johnny Mae Craig. Uh, they're, the contractor that has agreed to put in the walking cap in the slab for the honorary bench. They have agreed to donate their time and materials. So right now they are just tied up on some larger, larger, um, projects right now, but they have not forgotten about this. They will, um, finalize that, that, that final case once they have some availability. Um, Calum Landbank, I met with them on Tuesday, last Tuesday, July twenty seventh for our monthly update. The following will be discussed following, um, the Austin School property. So the landing, they will receive three offers. Uh, they will be reviewing those offers internally and then will establish a formal development team to review all offers and select, um, the full proposal from, from the offers that were submitted. They are working with, I mentioned this at the last Thursday special meeting, but they are working with the state land bank to utilize ARCA funds to address affordable housing countywide. So I'm, um, interested to hear how that continues to proceed. And as I mentioned, this, we have an opportunity to leverage some of our parts to, you know, um, join groups with other larger groups to tackle that large burden in our county. Um, twelve properties have been listed under the Develop the Spot program. They are soliciting, um, pricing for additional twenty-three additional properties that will be listed under that same program. So stay tuned for, um, more information on that. If you are interested in any of the properties, please either contact someone at the land bank or you can contact Director Arnold here at the city and we will, um, connect you with someone from their office. Hot hole patching plans. After precinct four and five, um, precinct meeting, we're all well aware that the condition of our roads are not great. Um, but we received a lot of feedback from the precinct meeting so far. Um, so our department, we have developed a hot hole patching plan. They started with precinct four and five just shortly after that precinct meeting, but I have attached, um, that plan, um, for you to reference. Um, they have broken the city into four, um, quadrants and they will work their way, um, through each, um, project. They will not move on to the next one until all of the streets have been addressed and all of, um, the roads have been properly patched. Unless they, um, an emergency situation comes up and they are pulled to a different area. So as I mentioned, um, sector two is just about complete and then they will proceed with sector one following that completion. I just want to, um, share with government the memorial service for former mayor Domingo. It's scheduled for Friday, August sixth with visitations, um, from eleven AM to twelve PM with the memorial service to be held. And that will be held at the, um, J. Kevin Ted, um, facility here in Alvin.
Oh. Well, we will always have time for your comments.
Well, thank you. Good.
Tompkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Pass this evening. All right, Mayor Snyder, council members, Sheriff of City Manager Snyder. And first, uh, may I express my sincere condolences to Clerk Domingo and to her passing of her husband, Joe, um, who served this, uh, this city, uh, for, for a number of years. And then we certainly, uh, certainly sincere condolences to, to the family and their loss. So with that being said, Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner, great to see you folks in person this evening. Uh, real quickly, the county board of commissioners actually met on July fifteenth in person for the first time since February of twenty twenty, which was an amazing feat to see my colleagues actually back in the commission chambers again. So it was great to see everybody after all that time. Uh, on the, at that meeting, the deputy treasurer, Melinda Weaver, I had indicated that, uh, the office will begin their forfeiture visits soon. And Allen was the first stop in that, uh, process. However, I will say one thing, the total number of forfeiture groups are actually down from twenty twenty. So that's a very positive keynote, uh, going forward. So that was a positive thing. Um, on July thirtieth, the county executive budget committee, which includes myself, Chair Frisbee and Commissioner Hatcher, held our, uh, with administration our first executive budget meeting for the twenty twenty twenty-two year. Uh, we reviewed the twenty twenty financial summary as well as the twenty twenty-two budget calendar, the important milestones, anticipated any health insurance costs that may be there, our five-year forecast model, as well as we also reviewed the twenty twenty-two expenditure budget directive, which include discussion on those projected revenue expenditure targets. In addition to that, as you just had mentioned about the ARCA funds, uh, we had also looked at all the long list of ARCA requests that we've received. Um, as many of you know, we received, the county received twenty-six million dollars in ARCA funding totally. Uh, we received our first allocation of thirteen million in May and then received our next thirteen million next year. So with that being said, the county has received close to, close to forty million dollars in requests. Many of them internal, but there are, were some external requests that were also included in there. And at this point in time, Administrator Scott will be bringing forth about nine million dollars worth of those requests for our approval at our county commission meeting on Thursday. And I'll give you more details once those are approved. I would anticipate that those will. So that allocates about nine to thirteen million for this year. Um, Administrator Scott, not quite sure where, where we go with, uh, with respect to, we've got our first allocation now. Do we do another allocation in, you know, the last half of the year or how that's going to look? It's still kind of an evolving evolutionary type situation. So stay tuned for that. Uh, on the countywide broadband task force front up for approval this Thursday night is a contract for fiber optic project advancement feasibility study journey with Aspen Wireless. And you know Aspen Wireless, who is instrumental in Marshall beating their fiber net. Uh, so they're going to be, we're going to sign them hopefully if it's approved to a contract so that they can provide that feasibility study. And as we know currently, Merritt Network is, is currently conducting that survey to identify those gaps in broadband in Calum County. And I'll discuss that a little bit further in just a second. Um, my monthly newsletter, folks, those people at home, if you're not on the newsletter list, it's an opportunity to see what's going on in our district as well as Calum County. Tompkinsccseven@gmail.com if you're interested, T O M P K I N S C C seven at gmail dot com. In this month's newsletter, I detail primary roads. Unfortunately, as you just talked about pothole patching, there's just not enough, ever enough money to go around. So that I've listed the primary roads that will be addressed, uh, in the county for this, for this year. As well as an interesting one where I spotlighted the celebrating centenarians of Calum County for our storytelling event on July twenty-third. What an amazing event. Most of you may know that our, our centenarians, we've got thirty-nine centenarians in Calum County. And normally on a yearly basis, we would have them go to Schuler's for a little luncheon and they'd be recognized. And so, well, obviously COVID didn't allow us to do that anymore. So Kate Turner from Senior Services came up with a wonderful, wonderful cool little idea, which was basically to be able to celebrate centenarians via a storyboard project. I had the honor to, uh, to, to interview one of the self, one of the centenarians. Um, as a matter of fact, so that was one of the great things. Twenty-four of our thirty-nine centenarians participated in this storyboard project. Uh, three of them in the, in the seventh district on our side. Mr. Robert Holt has a hundred and three. He's my number one fashion consultant. That's what I said that to them on July twenty-third event. He dresses better than anybody I know. So I, I had to get consultation from him. Ms. Bessie Hyger, who is a hundred and two from Alvin. And then Ms. Stella Ingram, who is a hundred and one from Homer. So we have three of our, so three centenarians on our side, which we, we absolutely adore. And one of the comments I made is what a, what an absolute gift to have the family be able to enjoy their family members for the, celebrating their centenarian year. So, um, and from that, I will say, one of the nice things about this project is this is going to be something that's going to go around. It's not just going to be that one time, one unit. It actually is going to go around, going to see at the Forbes Senior Center. It's going to be at the county fair. And hopefully, once school starts, we're actually going to be able to take this to schools. So our young people can learn about the extraordinary life experiences that our centenarians have led. So what an, what an amazing event. I hope that we continue to build off this every year and this just becomes kind of a staple. However, it's going to, we're going to have more challenges for our existing centenarians. You know, we've already had the, uh, the storyboard project for them. So we got to have to do something else. So maybe I can get, uh, Mr. Holt to go on a runway and do like a fashion show for us or something. I think he'd like that too, wouldn't he? I think he would, absolutely, absolutely. and do like a fashion show for us or something. I think he'd like that too, wouldn't he? I think he would, absolutely. Absolutely. So, and also too, one of the things we talk about roads again, and I always talk about roads. Well, one of the things I've really focused on here recently is I proposed a very five-point plan to administer Scott on what I would call my rebuilding respectability in Cowan County roads plan. For too long, I get calls all the time. We know, once you get outside the city, there's some challenges that we're all facing. And really for us to be able to get back on track where we're at, I think we've kind of fell off track. We need to get ourselves back on track and get back focused to some of those, I would say, simple yet pragmatic, practical things we could do to actually turn our road department around. Five-year plan, making sure that we have all of those aspects ready to go. So we know what we're doing when we budget our money, and we know what we're going for, going forward. So. And then, again, as I discussed a moment ago, the Merritt Network is conducting that survey, that internet broadband survey to identify broadband gaps in Cowan County, which we know they're significant on the east side of Cowan County, very much significant. So, but there are three ways to fill out that survey. Either through a, through your internet, through a text opportunity, and through a paper. And that, those flyers are available. I, I'm putting them on as many places I can get. As many meetings as I go to, they'll be out and about. So you guys will see these at the precinct meetings, if you guys have them, and I'll make sure that they're at all your precinct meetings too as well. But I always am making a challenge for our seventh district folks, including the great folks here in the city of Alvin. Fill out this survey, even if you feel you don't need it, fill it out because I want us to be the number one responders in Cowan County. Because I want to make sure we have the very strongest voice at the table. And really, that's where, that's where it begins, is making sure that we have a lot of our residents fill out the survey. So. With that being said, I apologize for being, I just, you guys brought up good pace tonight. So coming from one of the next. So again, with that, unless there's anything else for me, thank you very much. And it's great to see you folks again. Have a good evening. All right.
Thank you so much. Okay. Councilman Little, come in.
This is Ricky. Can you hear me?
Okay, Ricky.
Hi. So I did listen to most of the meeting and Kip just got me connected. One thing I wanted, the comment that I had put on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting was about the licensing and the person not receiving their licensing. Kip talked to me after the meeting and gave me an update on that. And the reasoning of why the gentleman didn't receive it was more of, I think they were misdemeanors and they weren't felonies at all. And it was just a matter of him updating and paying tickets for personal licensing, which I totally agree with. If you can't, if you don't take care of your personal licensing, how are we gonna, you know, we should hold you accountable for that. So because you're going to get a public license. No different than what we're doing with the rest of, you know, with the restaurants of what parts they need to take care of when they are applying for different things. So I just wanted to update that and clear that.
Thank you. Councilman Lee.
I just want to remind everyone that precinct one and precinct six are having their town hall this Wednesday evening at the dome at six AM.
I unfortunately will not be there. I have work responsibilities. The work that, you know, Chris money. Yes.
Precinct two and precinct three are having theirs on the 11th. At the Opportunity School, we're going to start out there in hours. It's the Habitat for Humanity. They had gotten in touch with me about getting out the word that they want to work in Alvin to get some homes going. And me and one of the persons from Habitat had been talking about how when you build, if you want to get businesses and things to come in, they usually go by how many people you've got, you know, working and living in your city and things like that as opportunities for people to work in their places and stuff. So Habitat is going to be working with us on the 11th at six o'clock at the Opportunity School. And we're going to leave from there and walk right across the street where they have a house that they just finished for veterans so that they can show us and tell us all about it. I think they're bringing applications for people who might want to sign up for either getting a house or getting their finances arranged to be able to get one. And so we'll see these flyers laying around and being passed around. Please pick one up and visit us at six o'clock. I'll need you later. This is yours.
I've got to mention, the Alvin Rehabilitation in collaboration with the Alvin Healthcare Alliance has been working to educate citizens about the COVID-19 vaccine, encouraging people to get their shot. What's the different advantages start for all the different types of vaccines that we have. There are also ones COVID-19 street teams being run out of Alvin Healthcare Alliance led by Brad Autman and Alfreda DiSartre. So if you need a shot, if you need to learn more updated information about side effects and why it's important to get your shot, please reach out to the community foundation or the Alvin Healthcare Alliance so you can connect it. It's important now more than ever as then to make sure that we get as many people vaccinated as possible to prevent the threat of COVID-19. Thank you.
Any comments? Maurice Berry, one of the kids at Hope Community that cares, is hosting a black party on August 7th, which is weekend. Looking, what do you feel like, and where he's having it? I know it goes from noon to dusk.
Mulberry Street between Monroe and Ionia.
Okay, Mulberry Street between Monroe and Ionia. So we have a great collaboration going on for this event. So if anybody is available, we'll staff that up. I'm sure to be happy to have anybody and everybody. Anything else? Get care for the Jackson.
Yes, also, it had taken place on August the sixth, which is Friday, the last day of, the last day celebration for difference makers. This program has went on for at least seven weeks strong with a lot of children that just would like to show you what they have been doing through the summer and all the good information they have received from our own individuals that are here at the city hall getting to know about our own city, which I thought was wonderful. So if you can come out and celebrate with us, lunch starts at one, but we will have speaking and giving out awards and their certificates at 12:30. So 11:30 is really for the children to get their, get their stuff together. And then at 12:30, we have to start then. And we will be giving out two propositions on that.
Anybody want to go ahead with the order? So we have Councilwoman Lauer did get ahold of us to say she was unable to make it this evening. I don't know what Councilwoman Clark said. She didn't vote on any of the items. If that needs to be excused, even though she was.
She's standing for the president, so I don't think you need to excuse her because she's here. She's here.
Okay, so we've made a motion to excuse Councilwoman Lauer.
So.
Okay. And would you like to go on that motion, please? Jefferson?
Yes.
Yes, Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Yes. Yes. Motion to adjourn.
So.
Support. And we'll follow this case. Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Will you?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. And motion for adjournment, if you don't want to.